...and every councillor up here had the chance to speak up and state, you know, their concern with me not being appointed over councillor Good who just arrived again. As it stands, I'll be the returning longest-serving councillor up here in the next election. And again, I'm not getting fair and equal access like my other councillors, but nobody said anything and there was no support. Again, I feel that we're all duly elected at large by the community. The mayor is only picked by the council, so we don't have a strong mayorship. It's simply by votes. Everybody up here is elected individually and may receive a different number of votes, and that doesn't matter, but everyone up here deserves a right to be on a standing committee. And I feel the continuation of the separation of that is just very concerning. And I hope that we look at ways to improve that up here in the next council. Thank you.
Councillor Pacina.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to pass today.
Thank you. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received various emails and communications, as did other councillors. And then last week, I was asked to attend the Climate Ready Groton series of three meetings. We had the first one last week where we covered and talked about buildings and energy, transportation, mobility, natural resources and consumption, infrastructure, land use and community health and safety. This was put on by our planning department and the resiliency group in the planning department. It was very informative. We met here in this room and broke into separate groups and talked about lots of different issues related to those five topics. So, the next one will be in December, and then I'm not sure when the follow-up one from there is. But it was very interesting, just talking about how to prepare and get ready for resiliency and rising sea levels and all that kind of stuff. So, it was good. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor McBride.
Thank you. Received many emails regarding development and future development at the S.P. Butler School. Just to, I haven't commented on any of them because I don't have anything to comment because this, or I have not discussed anything in this council chambers regarding any development there. So, I'm sorry, I haven't apologized, but I don't have anything to offer. I will be attending some public meeting or forum. They're having to discuss developments just to see what's going on. Also received a large number of emails, as I believe all councillors have, regarding, relating to the recent Fahy police situation. And just to reiterate, I don't think I have any involvement in this because there's nothing I can do as a councillor. It's the town manager's role and nothing that I'm involved in. Also received an email from John Goodrich indicating something to the likes of the HDC chair recommended he be on a committee, I think it was the HDC committee, and that he was questioning why he wasn't placed on the agenda. So, I'm sure we'll hear some answers in response to that under personal appointments when that comes up to the council. Also attended two CCM policy meetings. Most important one was the one on the education appropriations finance where certain integral matters were discussed. I'll just bring a few forth to this council. Some of the discussions for next year's legislation were potentially a two to three increase in pilot funding across the board, which would substantially help Groton. Also discussed the veterans exemptions and how to potentially look into eliminating some of the amounts that they're providing right now because some assessors are saying they're overreaching. Also discussed the Mohegan, Mashen, Tuckett Fund, and there's a recommendation from Austin and some others that has some support to increase an additional 90 million into that fund. It would go from 50 to 135 million and still be much less than the casinos paying into it, so that would be very helpful for Groton as well. And there was also discussion of moving forward with the 1% meal tax, taking that 1% of the meal tax and reinvesting or providing it back to the municipalities where the 1% tax was assessed or garnished. And also attended the first library committee meeting where we reviewed the questions and comments relating to the review of the recommendation provided to a council on how to fund the libraries in a more fair and equitable manner. So, that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received many of the same emails concerning S.E. Butler and an invitation to a public meeting at the library on October 2nd, which I plan on attending. Also, all the other same emails that everybody's received. Thank you.
Councillor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing additional to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have received many communications. I also received invitations for the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Orchestra. I'm having a day. As well as always home, so we can discuss this possibly after the meeting if anybody would like to attend some of those that are coming up this weekend. I see councillor Mary has walked in the door. It is 6:39 PM. And I do have a question regarding the S.P. Butler meeting. What day and time is that? And is it open to the whole community? Councillor McBride.
I believe councillor Good indicated it was October 2nd. I didn't have the date written. Is that?
Yeah, October 2nd was my email.
Yeah, I think I can look at my thing. Just give me a second. And I think it was 6:45, but I could be wrong.
I think it is 6:45, if I remember. But it didn't indicate that it was, it did not indicate that how it was open, it was an invite, actually, it was an invite to upcoming councillors that are running for reelection.
Oh, so it's not to councillors, it's to candidates.
My understanding.
It's to candidates, not to councillors. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure. It sounds like that.
That's how I write it.
So, it's for candidates. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Mayor, they give a list of different stakeholders in the neighborhood and just asking questions on what the plans are. Although, I don't know of any plans, but.
Okay. Thank you. I think I'm not going to dive into any other topics at this time. Councillor Mary, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Nothing, other than I attended a sort of a meeting fundraiser at the Coogan Farm Saturday night for Sidney Van Zant. She was presented an award for her work in the area with Gosa and other landscapes and whatnot she's worked on. Unfortunately, I didn't realize that I was in the wrong place when they asked for donations afterwards, and you bid by paddle. And I saw three paddles come up when the woman asked for a $10,000 donation. I said, "I'm in the wrong place." But, it was a good event.
Very nice.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to approval of minutes, but first, councillor Russ, you're going to take over the time, the clock timer.
I will do that.
Very good. Thank you so much for volunteering. Approval of minutes. This is going to be on page two. Councillor Russ, would you like to take that?
I make a motion to approve the committee, the whole meeting minutes of August 26, 2025.
Move by Russ.
Move by Jones. All right, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-809, August 26, 2025 minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
That passes seven to zero to one with Board of Lon abstain. Up next is our new business. First item is 2025-821, Community Tree Management Plan. Councillor Good, would you like to take that? It's on page 11.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-821, Community Tree Management Plan. I move to recommend a resolution approving the community management plan as presented.
Second, Jones.
Move by Good. Second by Jones. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Director of Parks and Recreation. To my left is Sarah Lilly from EOC, which is the consulting firm that we, the town, hired in order to do the street tree inventory and the community tree management plan. The draft of the plan was presented last year to the council. The council had some suggestions and questions, and we have implemented those into what was presented to you as the final, and we're here this evening seeking approval of the final plan. John, do you, can you pull up the presentation? And we have just a few slides to share with you, just to kind of, for councillor Good, who was not on the, was not here last year, just so that he can kind of get a refresher of what was done. I think that's the full.
Say that again. Oop. Is that one page there?
There was about eight slides, I think, that we had pulled together.
Is that one page there, or is that two? No, it's one. Okay.
Sure, I'll take it away. I am Sarah Lilly, like Mark mentioned, from EOC Environmental Group. I live over in Milford. I'm just going to recap the project that we completed and then pass it back over to Mark to see how the town has taken it to heart and enacted some of the recommendations we had. So, next slide, please. So, in brief, we completed a tree inventory of public trees along streets in the town and in parks. We inventoried just over 3,000 trees and also over 2,600 planting spaces. There was a community outreach component to the project, so we developed a survey and had it available to the public. There were five community events where it was shared. And then based on the feedback from the community and the data that we gathered, we developed a community tree management plan with this vision statement here. Championing, you can read it, but, championing community-led stewardship and amplifying diverse voices for resilient and sustainable forest management. And within that plan, we developed these 10 goals, and they kind of encompass everything to do with Groton's trees, from public trees to private trees, from when trees are planted to their maintenance, the stewardship, and care, and should take care of those trees. And each of these goals were broken down into objectives and action items to make them more digestible and easier to implement. Next, please. So, each of these goals, we identified a champion organization or a champion, and then associate organizations to make it come to fruition. And these could be anyone in town from the Parks and Rec Department Commission, Conservation Commission, even the GIS coordinator got involved. So, there were assigned objectives. They were given a brief timeline, short, medium and long-term type of timeline to complete them. And then also monitoring progress is an important part of the plan, so it shouldn't just sit on a shelf, it should be revisited. When we printed out the goals and objectives, we left a section for notes so that when it's revisited, you can update it on progress and what still needs to be done. And like Mark mentioned, we presented at the end of last year, and there were a few brief adjustments to be made to the plan, so we changed the title to "The Town of Groton", which is an important distinction. We added language about open space and trails since that's an important component of Groton and its community forest. And we added language about planting trees in the right tree in the right place, which again is important to keep in mind as this plan encourages the town to embark on a tree planting initiative. And I'll pass it over to Mark to elaborate on how he has made the plan come alive.
Yeah, next slide, please. So, we've already taken steps to implement some of the recommendations that were on this plan. We have applied for an urban forestry grant that would allow the town to plant 50 to 60 trees over the next two years. And we're utilizing information from the plan, including the Tree Equity Index and also Heat Index, which helps us identify those areas in town that either lack a diversity of trees or lack trees altogether. I think the grant is for like $160,000. We haven't heard yet, but it will, it's kind of the first step towards addressing those areas in town where, like I said, we either lack a diversity of trees or just don't have enough trees. We've also, as Sarah mentioned, worked with the GIS coordinator, and we've built a Community Tree Initiative webpage. And you can go to that webpage and look at all the different street trees, and each tree, there's a picture of all the trees, over 3,000 trees that were identified, and there's also some important ecological information about each of those trees. And as Sarah mentioned, we're also now tracking what trees get removed and what trees get planted, so this is kind of a living document that we're tracking that information. And we're also, within the next couple of weeks, we've partnered with Breeze Line, and they have, we're going to be planting eight trees in different parts of the town. So, we're taking big steps and taking little steps to try to implement what was in this And the other thing is, we've created some different tools to try to raise public awareness. There's, we've got postcard-sized flyers that we're handing out at tabling events that let people know about what we're trying to do, and we've got, this is an example here, one of the handouts that we have that includes on the backside, something for the kids to do to identify different trees. And the whole idea, again, is just to raise awareness of the website and to get people more, build the understanding of the importance of trees in Groton.
Councillor Pacina.
Hi.
Hi.
To the mayor, hi. My question is, what, I've got a question here. I do have one. What size of trees are you planting, are they small trees or are they adult trees?
They're not adult trees. They are, we like to plant trees that are at least two and a half to three-inch caliper at diameter breast height. So, you know, the real small trees, they can get knocked over easily, so we have made it a practice to try to plant, you know, a tree that has a collar about that large.
Okay. Are you going to be replacing any trees that were lost due to development?
Oh, well.
Well, that's a good question.
Yeah. I can say that any new developments, you know, the planning department will have this information, Public Works will have a copy of this plan too. So, if new developments go in, they will be addressing, making sure there's a diversity of trees. If you go into some developments now, every single tree's identical, and that creates a problem if a disease gets into the tree, like the Emerald Ash Bor. I mean, that has, a perfect example is Thrive 55. So, about four or five years ago, we lost, I think, close to 30 trees. Most of those were Emerald Ash Bor. So, it significantly changed, you know, what was going on there. We have since replaced those trees, and we're doing it with a diversity of trees so that we avoid that same type of situation. So, future developments, yes, we'll have a diversity of trees and the appropriate number of trees.
Outstanding. That's all I have.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Thank you, Sarah. Huge amount of work that you've put into this, so I think I'd just compliment you on the thoroughness. Can you just tell me, we're looking at page 29, and I know it's one of the goals, it's actually the first goal, is the tree canopy cover. And I can't quite figure out what percentages that you are recommending because you have, there's three of them on this page. Could you just, where do I look in this to find what your recommendation is? So, the very first item, you'll notice, in the middle column, it's 40%, and then it's 61%, and it's 44%, and so, just.
Just to note, that's page 57 in our packet.
And you know what? I was going to mention that to councillor Pacino's question. I think Noah Feldman, your GIS coordinator, did develop a tree canopy cover assessment, and that's part of it. You can get a tree canopy number from a variety of sources, and they all differ in their methods and their confidence intervals. So, that is a recommendation in the plan to develop a tree canopy analysis for the town, just so you have that information and you can reference it, and you don't have to go to outside sources like the state of Connecticut, or there's a tree equity map that has different tree canopy coverages.
So, would the tree canopy cover number be just what, because you're basically doing along our public streets and parks, so it's the cover in that area, right? It's not the cover of the whole town. It's just the cover basically running along Ruwan or whatever. Or is it?
It does cover the entire landmass of Groton, and that's partly why I was thinking, to your question, councillor Pacino, you can see, once you establish a baseline, you can see how it changes over time. You can see how different parcels, how they're zoned, how that canopy coverage changes over time, and to kind of identify, you know, where are trees being lost in the town, where might we want to encourage more trees to be planted.
So, at the moment, you don't have a number, right? You're just, you're going to kind of develop a number?
Well, actually, that was one of the points that the council brought up, and Noah, the GIS coordinator, did produce two maps, and those got incorporated into this document. And for, it's page seven for me, but I'm not sure what page it is for.
So, it's page seven of the document?
Yes, page seven of the document.
Page 35.
Page 35, okay.
Yeah, and there's actually two of them, page seven and page eight. And again, this is what, you know, Noah had put together using Noah, N-O-A-A, a different Noah, using N-O-A-A data.
So, basically, it's 64% or 67%?
Yeah, depending if you want, right, I mean, if you include the scrub brush added to the mixed forest, you know, and there's certain parameters that were built into that to reach that number.
So, I guess I would just say compliment Groton. This is higher than Connecticut's number. Connecticut's number, I think, is 61%, and Connecticut pretty much leads the nation in tree cover overall, so we're actually leading the nation, Connecticut, and pretty much every other town around here.
Yeah, I think a lot of that has to do with the percentage of open space that we have, which I think is, the Conservation Commission has been tracking that, and I think it's pretty close to 30%.
Yeah, we're doing the, well, we're trying to follow the 30 by 30, and we're at like 29.96 at the moment. So, I think, I think we're on a good track to, and this sort of gives us the visual and the numbers from a different side of it, coming from a different direction, so. All right. And can you just talk a little bit? I noticed you had in here the number of people you needed to implement. This is 5.5, and we are 0.86. We're probably never going to have a 5.5 number, but can this be implemented, or parts of this be implemented, with the staff that we currently have? Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yes, it can be. I mean, you know, we have to work in with the resources that we have currently, you know, and this is not just a Parks and Recreation, it's also Public Works, because they're also involved with street trees. Will we be able to accomplish, you know, everything that's in here? That will be a challenge, but this is certainly, you know, is a guiding document for us, and decisions will be made based on the resources available.
All right.
And I mentioned earlier, you know, the grant that we, the urban tree grant that we applied for, that, we did build in staff to that, not full-time, it would be part-time people maintaining the trees over the first few years. So, we may be able to take those steps forward, not just with the existing staff that we have.
Cool. All right. Well, thank you, and I definitely would be supporting this. I think this is great, and thank you for the information.
Thank you. I guess for some people, they were asking like how things would be funded. For me, even without a grant, we should have an initiative in our town. As a person who firmly believes in conservation and dedication to our environment, I feel we need to leave this earth better than we, you know, came to it, and we've learned a lot, like as we've been around, you know, learning like from some of our mistakes of the past and some of our other family that are no longer here that we're suffering the consequence from. With that, I think it's vital that we, beyond a grant, we look at ways that we're doing this type of initiative, and ways in which I saw in other areas that are very green out west, Colorado, is they have on Earth Day, people can come pick up trees, they have someone, they're educating them about how far away from their foundation, where to plant them, what would work in their area. Time and time again, I also want to say, and this is my opinion, it's not the opinion of the council, many of these things that we do often do not have the city included in it, and I don't know why the government doesn't also get involved in this. As a person who lives in the city, I have to speak up on both sides of the spectrum here, and I think it's very vital. The city brings in a lot of income driver, but it also brings in a lot of pollutants and a lot of other things, and yet, time and time again, the city are not reaching out for these types of things, or I just don't see them being partnered in, which I think is a loss to the whole community. Living in the city, when you're looking at the heat numbers rising, the city overwhelmingly is way hotter than the other side of town in the town of Groton, and so that is a concern. I live in one of the neighborhoods, I was looking to like kind of downsize over the years, and I live in a neighborhood where, back in the day, a developer came in, they plowed all the trees, they built everything up, and sometimes they didn't have a requirement to put trees back. And as a result, my neighborhood is pretty hot. I mean, there's no shaded area to walk anywhere if you just want to go out for a quick walk. And so, my question is, are these ideas going to be also presented to the planning and zoning? Is there a way that we can have an initiative where, you know, homes and developments come in, you know, they can't just plow all the natural species of trees, and there should be a requirement on so many that must go back? That's my question.
Yes. The street tree inventory and the management plan will be used by the planning department, but it doesn't address how the developments are built. I think that would be some type of a planning document, but this, as I mentioned earlier, will help them identify, make sure that there's a diversity of trees in the neighborhood, and make sure there's enough trees in the neighborhood. But as far as, you know, clearing a lot, this document was not intended to cover that.
Right, and that's why I just want to go a step further, and I appreciate your, the difference in the species of trees. I spent a lot of time up in certain sections of Maine, and this little peninsula area, all their trees started dying, and as they're dying, they're trying to put them back, but they're diversifying the species, and I forget what type of tree it was, but this whole area was known, it was even named with the tree. So, you know, again, we thought it was a thing back then, and then we realized later, oh no, it catches a disease and we lose everything.
Right.
So, I do appreciate that, and I think that education is important. But I do think, and this is me speaking, and I'll go to the city and speak about this under public comment there, I do think that the city needs to take a stronger initiative on the environmental climate actions and getting involved in some of these things, the joint effort. Again, overwhelmingly, the city folks on that side of town are suffering and needing. The amount of cars coming in and out of that area are, I mean, at 2:30, if you step out your door anywhere around EB, I mean, the fuel difference is up by 50% or more, and again, I'm guessing. So, I'll take my second turn after, but I appreciate this, I support this, and it shouldn't just be a grant initiative, it should be an action item that we do, and I hope that we maybe, as a council, I'm just going to finish my sentence.
Your time is expired.
As a council, may I finish my sentence?
No, you may not.
Sure. Thank you for your grace.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying thank you for this very comprehensive, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm going to give myself a few less time, minutes. Couple of questions that I have. You mentioned $160,000 grant that you're splitting with the city. You mentioned $160,000 grant that you're splitting with the city, or that you're going in with the city.
Yes, yes, actually, and that's a very good point. We are working with the city planner. It was a joint application between the town and the city. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Can you just give me an example of how that $160,000 will be used? And I'm saying this in context of, on the page before page one, so page 28 in our packet, it talks about, in order for this to be implemented, you're looking at $200 to $300 annual budget needed to meet your goals. So can you talk about the $160,000, please?
I should not have thrown out $160,000, because I actually don't remember the amount. It was a sizable amount. It was enough to allow us to purchase and plant and care for 50 to 60 trees over the next two years.
I know, sorry, having a hard time with this. I know that the first step in here was to take down trees that were dead. Has that process been started just for a safety reason?
Yes.
Okay. And another thing that I brought up in here that I just feel like has to be addressed really quickly is the ADA compliance with sidewalks. I don't know if, I know that's not exactly on topic, but it's in here. So I guess it is on topic. Just concerned about that, that there was a note that there are 34 sidewalks that are not in compliance due to the fact that the roots have grown up underneath that.
Right.
Has that started to be addressed?
That would be a Public Works question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll throw it out into the world and hope, I'm sorry, I'll throw it out in the world and hope that somebody hears. I'm going to, on page one, just something that, before we approve it, this talks about the Mystic Seaport and the Mystic Aquarium, both of which are in Stonington, not in Groton. So I wanted to just note that. While I'm looking for my next question, I just wanted to say the city of Groton is doing a tree initiative. I know that that was addressed as a concern. They have been planting trees in that area. And I know it's, it's not, there's still a lot of concerns, but there is some movement forward. Oh, I'm sorry, that, the ADA was on page 15 of the, the report, page 43 of our packet. I think those were on with my questions. Thank you so much for this report. It really gave us a lot of information. I really appreciate it.
Counsel Good?
I'm all set.
Okay. Counselor Pacino? No, I'm sorry, yeah, Counsel Boardman first, I'm sorry.
No, he was...
No, I had you down first.
In the past, you always said if they haven't spoken first, yeah?
He answered.
Sure. All right. Do you have a problem, Counselor? Point of order.
Yes, I have a problem.
Point of order.
Correction process.
Point of order.
Yeah, what's your point of order?
You know, I don't really need the decorum issues on the left.
Thank you. Counsel Mayor, did you have a point of order?
Yes.
Your point of order?
For admonishment of corrections.
I agree. I believe, I actually agree with both of you. So let's take note of that and try and move forward.
Thank you. I was being courteous, I thought he was up next.
Counsel Boardman? Let's just move forward.
Great. Again, just trying to be courteous, thought he was up next. Anyway, so if the city is involved, did the survey include the city fully?
No.
Okay. So that's my concern, because when this came before us a while ago, that's what I was indicating. So there's money going to the city, but there's been no proper survey. They weren't brought in initially, is that correct? When did they come into the application process?
Well, for the grant, that, they came in, I don't know, three or four months ago?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
For the grant.
Okay, that makes sense. So I just want to clear what I stated on the record, in correction to Counselor Rosska's statement. The reason I was stating that is because when this originally came before us, in my notes, they were not involved, and I spoke very heavily about the concern that they were not. And so I guess my question is, was there some talk afterwards that brought them in, or how did that come to light? Because that's great.
My recollection, and John, you may need to, is you spoke with the town manager, I'm sorry, you spoke with the, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
With the city manager at that time.
Mayor, yeah.
Yeah, let's try this again. It's my recollection that the city mayor, you spoke with him, and the response was there was, they were working on their own.
Yeah, the response was they had their own plan going.
Right.
And if you look at their website, they have a pretty robust information there, as well as a form to request shade trees on the streets, and so they're doing quite a bit there.
Okay, thank you. So, so again, as I stated, when this originally came before us, it was not included, they were not on the grant, and the survey, now that they're getting money for, are they planning on doing a survey to see where they are low on trees and species on their end, or?
I can't speak to what the city is doing.
I just, I just find it, I mean, it's great. I just think it would be interesting to know, to have that data, you know, and what their plans, and what plans do they have? Have they presented their plan to use for the money? Like you have goals here, did they submit any goals for the city side yet?
I'd just like to interject.
For the grant?
May I just interject? I think the motion on the floor is to recommend a resolution approving the community management plan as presented. This is really not about the grant. I've given some leeway, but I think it just keeps going farther and further into what the city is doing, and this is about the town of Groton recommended a resolution approving the community management plan as presented. It's about this packet that we received, and if we would like to accept it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in here, as you can see, it's not included, the city, referring to the map that's in our packet. That's what I'm speaking to. And that was my concern. So in here, no survey has been done of the city. And I just think that, you know, it's wonderful, but I express my concerns that this data only reflects a portion of our community. And I would love to see the data on the other side. Is this a grant that we can apply for? Well, you're not talking about the grant, right? So the money, these plans, is this something, these plans will initiate, where you'll apply for grants each year after that, or is it every two years, or we don't know?
Yeah, it will depend on when the funding is available. We haven't tracked it that closely. We became aware that this, the grant was available. This time, we've applied for it. I can't speak to what the states, the next time they're going to offer the grant.
Well, again, I'm in big support of it, and I'm glad I spoke up at the previous meeting, and it seems like some initiatives that were maybe already in place are now moving, and the other side of town is also involved in it. So that makes me feel a lot better. And it'll be interesting to see, to attend those meetings and find out what the plan is. And will there be like a link to this online so people can follow, and the community outreach efforts? Like how do you envision the community outreach efforts?
Yes, the current webpage does have a link that if people are interested in planting trees, they can reach out to us. That is on the webpage.
Okay, then, my last question. If there was an initiative where trees were available for community members to pick up, would it be city side or Groton side? Or if you live in the city side, would you have to, you know, would the grant money be? I just want to make sure, like, since we represent the whole town and the city, would it matter, like what initiative you went for, or could you go for both?
Well, I think our goal is to try to address those areas where the tree equity score is low, and whether that's in the city or the town, you know, that's an important part of taking this forward.
I guess my question again is, the initiatives in here, because you didn't survey the city, would the people that live in the city qualify under the town side to any initiatives that were done on the town side?
Yeah, the work that we've done so far, the webpage is, with that information, is available to both the folks in the city and the town.
And if there was outreach, like education, trees to pick up?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, sure.
Okay, they could, perfect.
Yeah.
Good to know, thank you.
Counsel Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So let me, I'd like to go from the city that we have no control of to the subbase we have no control of. Was there any partnering, partnering or communications with the subbase? Because other than obviously their waterfront and the ball fields, they don't have a lot of trees. No? Okay.
Well, I was going to say that we had a number of community outreach events, and which were open to anybody, city, town, subbase. So there was opportunities for folks to provide input on the development of this.
Okay. My other question is, with the trees that you're taking down, if they are the type of tree that's appropriate to burn in fireplaces and wood burning stoves, would there be someplace where they, we could have a pile of logs where somebody can just pick up some fire for free come in this winter?
Yeah, I think most of the, the trees that are cut up end up at the transfer station. And I don't know if those get put into a pile.
We do the free mulch, I would assume, Greg. I would assume, yeah, they go with our mulch pile.
Okay.
People can come and get free mulch there.
Yeah, the tree, when a tree is cut up, it's probably not cut up in 18-inch sections that would fit nicely in a fireplace. The guys probably are cutting them at four to six feet long, just to expedite. And then to leave a pile of logs for somebody to, well, I guess they could try to transport a four to six-foot log home in the back of their truck, but they certainly wouldn't be able to cut it up.
Oh, yeah. Not on public, not on town property.
Right, yeah, exactly.
I fully understand that.
Yeah.
All right. I was just looking out for, you know, some of these heating bills.
Sure.
All right, I thank you very much. I'm good.
Mr. Berry?
I just wanted to mention, it was mentioned about the interactive tree map. If you go to our website, I put a news item right on the main page, so you can go to that map, as well as a link to the information page, so, right under that same news item.
All right, well, I thank you for coming. I thank you for doing this plan. It has been a long road here to get to where we are now, and it is, seems to be a very informative, informational-packed document that gives us a lot of information. So I think I will take a call to vote on 2025-821, Community Tree Management Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Passes eight to zero to zero. Thank you. Up next is 2025-810, Naming of Pickleball Courts. This is on page 128 of our packet. Counsel McBride, would you like to take that one?
Thank you. Item 2025-810, Naming of Pickleball Courts. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution to name the pickleball court complex the Bassi Pickleball Courts.
Second, John.
Led by McBride, second by John. Would you like to speak on this topic?
Sure. I received a letter and a petition from a Groton resident requesting that the new pickleball courts built between Thrive 55 and the library receive the designation or naming as, well, the original request was just pickleball courts, or Bassi courts. The gentleman that submitted the letter, which I included in the packet, attended the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting to kind of present the information, talk about what the Bassis have done for pickleball here in Groton. At the time, there was a suggestion made, during that meeting, there was a suggestion made that it be renamed the Bassi Pickleball Courts rather than just the Bassi Courts. Wesley Johnson, who was the gentleman that wrote the letter and got all the signatures, agreed with that modification of his original proposal, and the commission unanimously passed a motion to recommend to the council that the pickleball courts be named Bassi Pickleball Courts. I also included the procedures that currently exist for naming or renaming recreational facilities or parks. And the next step is to go to the council seeking approval for the recommended naming of the park. And this is not something that's unique. We've done this in other, I could list off five or six other recreational facilities in town that have been named after somebody.
Counsel Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. What are the, what are the pickleball courts named right now? What do we call them?
They do not have a name.
They do not have a name?
No.
Is there any signage with the no name?
Other than rules and regulations? No.
No. Okay, so we're not replacing any signage?
No.
How much will this new signage cost?
It would depend on the size of the sign and the material it's constructed on. Best guess, less than $200.
Not crazy money, okay. And my last question is, let me second, let me put the glasses on. Oh, there it is. Cost change. And will there be any cost to change any literature and website, anything on the website?
No, anything on the website, there wouldn't be, there'd be no cost, other than, you know, a person's time.
Okay. And the last question, actually, the last question was where's the funds coming from? But it's $200, doesn't matter.
Yeah, it would come out of the department's operating budget.
Yeah, it would be fine. All right, I'm good. I'm all for it, I just wanted to know what was going on.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Was this the, when we did the opening ceremony or christening of the courts, was this the gentleman that spoke?
Yes.
He's the one that sort of initiated and done everything?
Yeah, and I can't say that, you know, Dom and his, and his wife, Dom has really taken the initiative to grow pickleball here in Groton. He, for probably the last six or seven years, has donated his time to offer lessons, and the money that we charge for the lessons goes back into, goes towards pickleball. So he's really done quite a bit to, and he, actually, he assisted in writing the Opera Grant for the money that we received to help build those pickleball courts.
I look over at those courts, and there's always somebody playing on them. I mean, they're extremely popular.
Yes, they are.
It's a great success story for, you know, residents wanting something, and we're able to deliver them something that's
Right.
Above and beyond what they wanted, so I think it's great.
Yes, yeah.
And just reading through what you had written here, or in the letter that, excuse me, I think Wesley Johnson wrote, these people have just done, dedicated basically their lives to bringing pickleball to Groton.
Yes, that's a good summation.
All right, I'm in favor of this. I think this is great. I think it's a well-deserved individual on an athletic facility that's catering to an awful lot of people.
Yeah.
And people having a lot of fun, so.
I do also recall us voting on the ARPA money for the pickleball courts, and also adding the lights. And I remember that meeting, and it went very late. I think that was our latest meeting I've ever attended. So I'll be happy to vote in favor of this as, you know, somebody who has dedicated himself to making Groton a better place. So I'm always happy for somebody to step up and do such things. So with that, I will take a vote on 2025-810, Naming of Pickleball Courts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Passes eight to zero to zero. Up next, thank you, have a good evening. 2025-875, The Police Station Chiller Unit. Just a moment. This will be on page 136 of our packet. Counsel Jones, would you like to take that one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-875, Police Station Chiller Unit, Motion to Recommend a Resolution to Transfer $500,000 in Capital Reserve Funds for a CIP Project to Replace the Existing Chiller Unit in the Police Station. So moved?
Second.
Led by Jones, second by Good.
Good evening. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. The police station building uses what we call a chilled water system to provide air conditioning to the building. It's a fairly typical system for the size building or even larger. It's very efficient. It's very efficient. At the heart of the system is what we call a chiller unit, which creates this chilled water. It's a fairly big piece of equipment. It's about six feet high, ten, ten or eleven feet long, three feet wide, weighs about six thousand pounds or something like that. This was installed in two thousand when we did the large addition with the emergency dispatch and some other renovations at the police station, so it's about twenty-five years old. Recently, we've had some issues with the chiller. In two thousand twenty-one, we had it go down right in the middle of the summer. We had to bring in a temporary chiller unit and a generator because of the power requirements, and, you know, to get that stuff in place takes a little while, so the building's without air conditioning. And then even once we get it running, you know, you get the noise and the smell from the generator, so there are a lot of complaints from the emergency dispatchers and the police using the facility when this temporary system is up and running. We got it fixed, and it was working for a few years, but then again, this last summer, same thing, it went down. There was a major component, which is a compressor on this unit, went out, so we had to, again, bring the rental units in, replace it. And, you know, at this time, we had been kind of monitoring, but the chiller's come to a point where it really needs to be replaced. If we go through the normal budget cycle, we wouldn't have funds available if they were approved until July first of two thousand twenty-six, so that means next year we would be, you know, going on a hope and a prayer that we get through the summer with the chiller as it is. So, you know, it's a tight schedule, but if we, you know, transfer the funds now, we could get this thing, it's about a seventh month, seven-month timeframe, we'd have it up and running just before cooling season starts next summer, so they have a new chiller for next summer. And we've estimated the cost, with all the, the equipment and all the installation, design, construction, and, you know, contingencies, everything is five hundred thousand dollars.
Just to add on a little bit, and I believe those windows in that building cannot be opened, is that correct? Can the windows in that building even be open? I think some, but not like, dispatch has no windows.
Dispatch has no windows at all.
Yeah, it was in the eighties in dispatch, very uncomfortable. We're looking to take the money out of our capital reserve fund. We have approximately two point two million in that fund right now, and we are anticipating likely having that fund grow late in the year with enterprise zone funds, so the D. Mars and the finance director feels comfortable using that fund, so.
Councilor Boardman.
Thank you. I guess this is the first time I'm really hearing of any great snippets of this, you know, I remember the locker room and all that. And then we got this letter here from, I guess it's at the union. The F.A.F.S.C.M.E. You know, I don't know, I, I just think that, like, when these things are starting to happen, I wish we would hear about them a little bit earlier, on, you know, because this letter's pretty firm here that we got from the union stating, you know, the, as a result, you know, that the morale and the safety concern and the severity of distorted, distorted working conditions among our members is affecting the morale and health and safety. The Band-Aid approach that has been used by the town over the past three to four years to temporarily fix this system has cost approximately thirty dollars. Again, I just kind of get sad that a union has to get to this level to, like, I mean, we meet every week, you know, like, things break at your house and you have to fix them, so I just don't know why, I don't know, if this has been happening over, it sounds like quite some time, it never even came up on the budget. So my question to the manager, to the mayor, to the town manager, how come this wasn't identified in our budget last year?
Well, it was an issue a few years ago, but then it wasn't an issue again really until this, this summer. And then it's even gone down a couple of quick times, a couple of times after that. As soon as it went down this time, and I think it took significantly longer than what was hoped to get it up this time.
Correct.
As soon as it went down, I informed the council, I sent, emailed everyone detailing it, and along the way, I let the council know we were probably going to have to do something with this.
Yeah, I just, it's the first time it's on the agenda, is what I mean, like, as an action item, so. Is it the whole building that's affected? Because I know some of the buildings, you know, older than the other section, is it the whole system that's affected? The whole entire building?
The entire building, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I definitely empathize, as a person who has medical conditions, I cannot be in, like, over eighty-something degree weather for sustained periods of time, just based on some of my own, you know, medications and things, and so, yeah, it makes for a very unhealthy work environment. So I definitely feel like this needs to be rectified, and I wish this was on the agenda sooner. Also, you know, from a police standpoint, right, we do apprehend people in custody that are innocent until proven guilty and, you know, are in holding cells, you know, that's not considered healthy conditions either. I mean, no matter if they break the law or not, I mean, someone who has a medical condition could have a seizure or many other things if they have severe medical, you know, being in a, a building confined like that without proper ventilation is a, a, a little concerning because, you know, that's, that really is terrifying, actually. So, I thank the unions for speaking up on behalf of the employees, and like I said, I, you know, I encourage the unions, reach out even sooner if you need to. I think that's, that's why we're here, but from, not just the employees and the staff, from the clerical down to the, the police, but also to the people that we're serving, which are the folks that become temporarily arrested or, you know, however, they're apprehended for whatever reason, you know, we do have an obligation to make sure they're providing humane, safe environment that is, and, you know, climate control is one of them. So, I definitely think we need to look at this. I'm interested to hear what the councilors have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Burr.
I just want to, again, it hadn't been an issue for years, it became an issue, we addressed it immediately. This was the appropriate timing for it to come up. I just want to make that very clear.
Councilor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I just want to say, I've been following this through the town manager's emails, and I appreciate it. I, I would like to see it during budget time, but I appreciate the urgency of getting this done before it heats up again. My only question is through the mayor, is how solid are these numbers on the budget? Are they, are they recent and reasonable?
Yeah, the, the chiller itself is a hundred and fifty, that's an actual quote from the manufacturer. The other ones are myself and my consultant engineer going through and, you know, kind of giving their best guess to what things are priced today. So this is a, a new estimate, and we do have, you know, some, you know, like a fifteen percent construction, construction contingency, which is pretty hefty, so I'm, you know, confident that this number is, is good.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Good stole my question. I'm good.
Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What is the, the total budget for this project?
The five hundred thousand.
So I just, I'm looking at the numbers that are on your budget sheet, and I'm just, the construction total is three eighty.
Construction, just like, if you go up, the bid we would get would be around just three eighty-five, then you add a contingency to that, so if things come up during construction. So your budget is four forty-three, and then I added for engineering, contract administration, another almost fifty thousand or over fifty.
So, in the construction total?
So the total budget for the whole project, to design, install it, and with all the contingencies, is five hundred thousand.
So in the, in the construction total is the hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, that's at the top for the chiller itself.
Okay, design separately, like, it isn't a hundred and fifty, and then construction is three eighty-five and contingent, it's, they just keep adding up, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That's what I just seem, when I look at the numbers, it's like, which way does it go? With all the tariffs and prices that are going up all over the place on other projects that we have, are you comfortable that we have enough here to, to get us through the next few months that this project's going to entail?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Because it's, we seem to be finding prices that things are skyrocketing, so, okay, I'm just worried about surprises, so, making sure you have enough. Okay, this is needed, and when can they, when can you start doing this?
I've already got the engineers starting to look at it, putting some designs together. Because like I said, it's a tight schedule, you know, it's like a three-month lead time just to get the chiller.
I was going to say, that was the next question, is I know with, like, you know, HVAC equipment, there's quite a long lead time on a lot of it, so, this is easier to get than some of that.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilor Merritt.
I have a question for Director Hanover, is this basically a swamp cooler?
What, I'm sorry, what?
A swamp cooler?
Swamp cooler? I'm not familiar with that, that is.
That's where you run water through pipes in the overhead and blow a fan down onto them.
Yeah, it runs, there's, there's a closed water loop that runs throughout the building that's chilled very cold water, and then it goes through a coils, and then the air blows through that, takes the heat out, and cools the air, so.
I thought, yeah.
That's what you're referring to, yes. I've never heard that term before.
Evaporated, evaporative cooling, yeah, swamp cooling?
Yeah.
I like the idea, I think we should move forward on it and get, get it in order, get it beginning. Any further discussion is just passing information to people. I think they've got it all right down here, what we need to know.
Councilor McBride.
Thank you. I normally would say I'd like to review this during the budget process, as some others have indicated, however, I think that's also why we have a capital reserve fund for situations like this, and I'm comfortable with it. Having two point two million in reserves, I think this is sufficient, and I don't think option two of holding this off until the summer of two thousand twenty-seven is acceptable. I think this letter is a, a starting of a potential grievance period if we don't do something now, so I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Councilor Pacino.
Just had another quick question, through the mayor. I totally understand what the fifteen percent construction contingency is for. Not understanding what the general conditions fifteen percent is for.
That's for, like, their contractor's bonds, his insurance costs, his overhead, supervision.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll follow this, by the way.
Councilor Boardman.
Oh, thank you. So I just wanted to check, so the construction of this system, it was originally put in in two thousand, is that what this says here? The original HVAC system is?
Two thousand, correct, yes.
So it's twenty-five years old? And again, yeah, I received those same emails, the town manager and all that, I just, again, I feel frustrated that the union has to send such a firm letter. Even though it was on our radar, it wasn't enough that it made it, has this been on as a CIP in the last two years at all?
No, because there haven't been issues prior.
Yeah. So, again, for me, and again, this is my opinion, I hope that we can move to be more proactive. I think as a whole, for me, I have trouble with just, you know, I think, we know a system's twenty-five years old, like, right, like, I moved in my house, I knew my roof was, you know, pushed in fifteen years, it's on my radar, right? I'm not going to wait for it to leak, to fix it, I just hope that we can maybe find a way to identify our large systems. Some towns have, like, a full grid sheet with the things that are coming out, and I don't, I haven't seen this one projected, and it should be because it's about twenty-five years. So maybe there's some other systems out there too that are close to failing, and I would just think it'd be great to kind of talk about those on the off-budget season, that way we can help sooner, if possible. So, just a thought, it would be helpful. Again, it, you know, sounds like it was trying to be fixed and it didn't stick, but again, I read the union letter, and it's a pretty firm letter that they were very concerned about the temporary fixes. So, again, looking at a system that's almost twenty-six years old, you know, it maybe should have been on our radar as a, again, during the budget season, you can have the things that are being requested to be funded, but there could be things that, hey, it's coming down the pipeline, be prepared. And that way, when this comes before us, we have those emails, but we also have, that already being talked about within the budget year. So, for me, being proactive versus reactive, and I look at it like my own house, you know, I've got to start thinking about those costs, like, you know, I'm, I'm going to need a whole new heating system soon, and it's on my radar, and it has been. So, I just didn't know, is there any other processes that we have for our major systems, like roofing and all those things that, you know, are due to be, fail, I guess through the mayor, through the town manager, that we have like a, like a catalog of?
Well, the public works tracks that, sort of like things like roofing and anything like this, you know.
And is there a hit list coming up?
And we have so many needs and not enough money that we pretty much, a lot of things have to wait till we start having some issues. We don't, we don't replace things prior, just because we don't have the money, so.
Okay, I just think we have a hefty general fund, so I'm just curious. It'd be great if there is a hit list of, okay, if there is a hit list of items that are near suffering or nearing, you know, expiration, it would be nice to kind of know about them, if, if you, if you have a list somewhere, send it on to us, and that way we can look at it because it would be good to know. Thank you.
Mayor. I just wanted to mention, we were, Greg and I and the chief were already talking about proceeding with this prior to getting a letter from the union. As soon as, you know, we started having such a big issue, we were talking about getting prices and moving forward, so, just to make that clear. This was just the cherry on the, on the top, getting the letter, so.
Well, I can recall the town manager talking about this and mentioning for quite some time that there were some issues up there and that this would probably be a big expense coming down the pike. But I can also remember, starting on this council eight years ago, when we were so behind on just about everything, everything, and trying to get as much as we could possibly fixed in our CIPs over the years, and how tough the financial, the finances were back then. We have been very blessed, I would say, in the past eight years, that I think we have had some very good, fortunate financial years, to be able to take care of a lot of things, and as well as having the enterprise money coming in, which does not give us the full tax benefit from Electric Boat, but it does give us something from the state of Connecticut that is pretty substantial to help. So I'm very pleased with that. I do appreciate the letter from the Chilla Communicators and the Police Union Presidents, the signed letter, I appreciate your letter, and, and I'm grateful that we have money in our reserve at this time, so absolutely would be voting in favor of this. Seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote on two zero two five dash eight seven five, Police Station Chiller Unit. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention. That passes eight to zero to zero. Up next is two zero two five dash eight seven four, Human Services Assistance Fund. This is in our packet on page one thirty-eight. Councilor Pacino, would you like to take that one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Am I reading the whole thing, Madam Mayor, or just the motion?
The motion at the bottom.
Okay. Motion to recommend, oh, I said, let's start at the top. Two thousand twenty-five eight seven four, Human Services Assistance Fund. Motion to recommend a resolution to increase the Human Services Assistance Fund seven, seventy-three sixty by fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund Contingency Fund under H.S. General Assistance.
Second. Second. Move by Pacino, second by Russ. Mr. Burr.
All right, I'll start off. I do have Kim Turek, the Director of Human Services, on the line for a question, for any questions. As you may recall, as when we went through the budget process, the direction to be in staff was, if we needed more funds, we were to come back for the council to let you know of that need. That's what we are doing now, is following council directives. We had allocated twenty-three thousand five hundred to the Human Services Assistance Fund. Mostly, we keep the max at six hundred, but there are times the director waives that to, and, and myself at a certain level to go higher. I did provide the council a listing of all allotments given out this year, just so you can see the type of amounts that are involved and how many. And, so we're asking for fifty thousand. There will be some United Way money coming in, in the beginning, I think, in January. We do have a donation trust fund, we hit up where as needed, we just try not to deplete that, keep, we try to keep that a healthy balance. There's been times we've had some large issues come up that we've helped out with, so, we don't want to eat into that too much. So, after confering with the director, we're asking for fifty thousand, but again, she is here if you have any particular questions on the process.
Thank you. Councilor Boardman.
Uh, thank you. This is definitely something I'm passionate about, and again, I don't think fifty thousand is enough, through the town mayor to the human service director, do you think that this is enough money coming into the cold months, winter, and fifty thousand dollars? Again, when I look at how much we allocate in the percents total of our whole big budget, this is less than like a percent of the total budget, and we do not have a shelter for many of the outside resources in our town, and so I definitely am concerned, so that was my question.
I'll let her answer a second, but I just wanted to add, as a reminder, there, you know, we'll have access to more funding through United Way in January, and we also have other programs, we have Groton Utilities, you know, matched dollars, we have, we help connect people up, disabled and elderly with renters rebates, we do a lot of other programs, and we have the food lockers, we have a lot of variety of help, but I'll let her talk about the amount.
Good evening. The short answer to that is that it's enough for a little while. It's enough, I believe, hopefully, to get us through when we can, again, utilize those United Way prevention funds, but I think it can definitely, you know, get us through for several months, hopefully.
Okay, yeah, because I actually had a constituent reach out to me recently and said that they were about to become homeless, that they had received help. that they had received help when her mother had passed, and that they tried to reach out again, and they said they weren't. And I just didn't know, like, again, what the rules are, how, you know, because I, I've come across these folks in the community and I don't know how to advise. Like, is there some algorithm? What's the qualifying factor so maybe I can help? So that's my other question.
Sure, yeah. I would encourage them to, you know, you can give them my contact information, encourage them to go to the front desk or to call a point of contact is always the front desk for human services. We do have general guidelines, but everything is reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Just because there are so many different types of situations, different factors, we want to make sure that we do our due diligence and look at everything case by case. But generally speaking, folks may qualify even if they have received assistance from human services in the last 12 months. Historically, that wasn't always the case, but that's something now that, you know, we are, in certain cases, we are willing to, you know, assist more than one time in a 12-month period. The limit used to be $400. So the $600 per household general guideline is increased a little bit, and that's just in the last few months. So general guidelines, folks, are 175% federal poverty level or lower. Again, that's not set in stone. We definitely, you know, look at everything case by case. Everybody meets with a social worker who's looking for assistance, whether that be on the telephone or in person, and we get an idea of what the household situation is and then make the best determination from there. But 175% of the federal poverty level and then general guideline maximum is 600, but as John stated, you know, sometimes they are larger than that depending on the need. But those are the general guidelines. And then a basic human need is defined the same as the ARPA funds. So we used to have the ARPA funds during and after the COVID pandemic, and those guidelines are the same. Mostly, we're seeing renting utilities, but that could also include things like childcare, car repairs, transportation, medical expenses. It just depends what the need is, but generally, it's rent utilities.
And then my next question is, you know, it would seem to me, and I'm great to see that it went up $200, but if I was, you know, a family of four needing assistance versus maybe a family of two or one, I wonder if there's, and again, probably won't know it tonight, maybe this is an agenda referral item, where maybe that number should take into consideration the number of people in the household? Because 600 for one person is a lot more than 600 for like, you know, a mother and three children or a family of four, a husband and wife with two kids. Has that been taken into consideration at all when looking at these numbers? So it's, you know, maybe based on family size as well to make sure some, that money's being stretched a little bit further and helping?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a really good point, and that's why, you know, we pride ourselves in looking at each case carefully. And the social workers meet with myself, and we staff cases, just to make sure we're kind of, you know, taking the whole picture into account. But, you know, there are also opportunities sometimes where we can combine our resources with, say, another agency. It just depends on the situation. So if somebody's rent is 2,400 a month, for example, for, let's say, that household of four, if we might be willing to pay, you know, let's say we could cover $1,000 from town funds, and maybe TVCCA or another partnering agency can cover the 1,400, then hopefully, we can get them, you know, the most robust amount of assistance that we could collectively put together.
Right. And some of the programs that I've been involved in with, you know, through Ledge Light and many other resource agencies that I've been involved with throughout the many years, sometimes it's also helping them. Maybe there's a funding to help with utilities and something else, so now that frees up some cash flow for them to be able to afford that rent by helping them with food that can cover them for the week or other ways, couple gas cards, right? So things like that can decrease and open up funding so that they can afford their rent. But again, I do think that I would love to see some write-up on this a little bit more detailed to talk about looking at family size. So if we're giving 600 now, should it maybe be 700 if you have a family greater than two or three? You know, I just would love to see some more identifying things, but I can write that as referral item, and if it gets approved, maybe the town manager can invite you back and we can brainstorm, or you can come with what your suggestions would be, would be really exciting to talk about. Again, I don't think 50,000 is enough. Can you just now draw me to this, this form that was on our desk when we came in through the mayor, through the town, to the town manager, what this is referring to this grid?
Sure. And I'd sent this out previous to the council. It just, it shows for this fund, all the different awards this, this year that's been given out. So you can see all the amounts, each amount that's been awarded.
Because my next question, should people's names be on here for their?
There are no names.
No names?
No, those are where they're being paid to, like the apartments and Groton Utilities.
Yeah, okay. So we are not, so these are not people, just the Branford Manor apartments? It doesn't identify them? When it just says Branford Manor Apartments?
Correct.
All right. No, that's great. I do think that, you know, I would like to see our human service funding, and I appreciate all your efforts. It has nothing to do with what you do. You're only, can do with what you're given for money, but I personally'd like to see more money given in this area. I'd like to put a, put a motion on the floor. I'd like to put a motion for...
An amended motion?
Sure. If that's what we need to put, absolutely. Because again, we've spoken about, we'll do this later, we've given all of our money to other things, and we constantly are giving 20 here and 50 there.
I need your motion.
Sure. I'm still using my time too, but sure.
Point of information, I stopped the time. Am I still going?
I was hoping she was going to put the amended motion on the floor.
Sure, I can put the motion out. My amended motion would be $75,000. I think that's a little bit stronger. I mean, again, it's only a fraction after what we've already given.
Counselor Bordelain, you need to wait to see if you have a second.
Sure.
I'll second that motion.
amended by motion to change the 50,000 to 75,000 by Bordelain, seconded by Russk.
May I speak to it now?
If you speak to it now, you're using your second term.
I'll wait then, I think, let everyone else take their turn.
Counselor, good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, how fast did you burn through? I know you're, I know you're asking for more funds and you planned on it. Are, is it in the timeframe you expected, or is it, has the money burned through a little quicker this year or slower?
It definitely has burned through a little bit quicker this year. We definitely have had a higher-than-usual number of basic needs requests. At the very beginning of the fiscal year, we had 23,500 in general assistance, and we're down to just under 3,000, and that is quicker than usual. And that just speaks to the need and, you know, combine everything that's going on, combining, you know, the housing shortage, housing crisis, cost of rents increasing, but we have seen it increase quicker.
Thank you. And also, do you feel that 25,000 is good insurance to get to the point with the United Way? The additional 25,000?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm, I'm all in favor for increasing it by, to 75,000. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Russk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, hi, Kim, thanks for being here tonight. What is your average per month prior to this budget cycle? What was your average spending per month on this?
What was our average that we spent to help with basic needs?
Correct.
So for... Bear with me just a second. In the last 30 days is where we have seen, you know, profound increase. But for example, in the month of August, we went through general assistance funds in the amount of around $15,000. And then in July, we went through general assistance funds in the amount of... That was a shorter month there. We actually, in the month of July, only had one request from general assistance, but we also were using the donation trust fund. And so the donation trust fund, I apologize, I don't have the exact figures on hand, but it was a few, a few thousand dollars from the trust fund and then a little bit over 1,000 for the gap and then about 1,000 for the general assistance. So historically, it's been a lot lower than what we have seen in the last 30 days. It is a pretty profound increase, which is why, you know, John and I have been discussing what could be done.
Okay. So in previous, prior to July, like this time last year, do you have an average of what it was like?
I apologize. I would have to get back to you on those figures.
That's fine.
I'm pretty new to this role, so I've been in the director's seat for about six months now. But I would be happy to get those figures together and report back.
That'd be great. And again, I'm not trying to put you on the hot seat, I'm just questioning, like, how much more this is. As many of you know, I work in food insecurity, and we are continually seeing more and more, more and more people coming through who just need to, I'm sorry, I thought I started my time, who just need to meet their basic needs. So this, this, while it's scary that we spent $15,627, $24 in one month, is not surprising, honestly. People are truly struggling right now. I, I support the $75,000. I do hope that that will tide us over until we get funding from other sources. And just for clarification, I don't work in that department for United Way, so I have no say in that. So I, thank you. I will support this amended motion.
Counselor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without the additional $25,000 in this amended motion, I would imagine there's, you already have partial helps for rent. You're probably going to be doing a lot of helps for heat as well, oil and things of that nature. So I'm looking at really just a two-month average here. Looks like about $9,000 or almost $10,000 a month. Do you think that might get you out to January?
I'm hopeful that it very likely will.
Okay. And with that said, to, to Mr. Burr, will this extra $25,000 still be available in January if, if they need it?
Sure, certainly.
Okay. So we don't have to do that right now? It's always there? It will be there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But, you know, 25,000 doesn't go a long way, so I do support, if the council's supportive, doing it. You know, the worst case here will also eat into our trust fund, but, you know, I'd rather not do that too much. Though we are, by the way, we are adding a, and by the end of the next few weeks, we should have a donate button on our website for donating directly into human services, and we'll start hitting out requests hard after that, so.
I gotta do something like that on my website.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, to the town manager, how did you come up with the $50,000 number?
Well, looking at, we're about, you know, halfway through this budget year, and as we're seeing the increase, so it's kind of looking at the worst month and thinking, well, having enough for the next three months at that worst, if it stayed about that same. And then if it went a little over, we would use the trust fund dollars. And I say about the more money, if we did look at upping money for larger families, then if we do the 25,000, it might give us a little, you know, by the time it comes up, we can kind of see where we're at on money and, you know, have to go twice through the process.
Are you, are you, so you're comfortable adding, going to 75 from 50?
Yeah. I'm comfortable with either, but certainly, there's always the need.
There's always the need. And in the General Fund Contingency Fund, how much money is in that?
300,000. We haven't done anything through that, though with all that's been going out of overtime with police. I do expect probably a couple hundred thousand needed later.
That's where we'll dip in.
But worse comes worse, then we have, we'll have to dip into the general fund, fund balance like we did this last year.
And the United Way Prevention Funds, they come in January? Okay. And that's?
Yep.
25,000?
That would be 80,000 that would be available in January, but that is, it's a shared pot, so to speak, between a few agencies that also sign the MOU. So for example, last year, the United Way Prevention Funds, there was $80,000 available to those same agencies, and Groton Human Services used $50,000 of that alone. So we definitely maximized that resource. We were able to help 61 clients with those funds.
With those funds. So does, does all 80,000 come to Groton, or does it go to other places? And we just tap into it as we need to? I don't...
So all 80,000 is available to all the agencies that sign the MOU, and I believe, off the top of my head, I believe it's four organizations, including Groton Human Services. So then it's like a first come, first served, whichever funds are accessed first. But like I said, we were able to utilize 50,000 of those 80,000 dollars last year.
Okay. And do you anticipate the other three organizations' needs are going up also? Do you think that their, their need is going to be greater, like our need seems to be greater?
Yeah, I would imagine it might be something that we're seeing across the board, for sure.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm fine with this. I, I know that in the past, we have just done where the town manager comes and asks for an additional contribution, so I don't know if it always is sort of necessary, but because we can constantly, we can add it as we need it and do it on the fly. But this is okay for the moment, so, okay.
Just a note for the minutes, Counsel Parker has arrived at 7:58. And just to let you know, get you up to speed, we're on page 138 of our packet on the Human Service Assistance Fund. There is an amended motion on the floor, made by Bordelain, seconded by Russk, for the amount of $75,000 to change the 50 to 75. Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. Again, I just want to thank you for all that you do. I know being in that role, in that capacity, is, you know, it's, it's hard to tell people no when you can obviously see, visibly see the need, and that is the thing. And again, for me, when we look at the whole budget, the 75,000 plus the 20, like, that's pennies on the dollar in our big budget. It's, we, I feel, have an obligation to help everybody from every corner of this town. And when you look at, you know, the allotment of funding and things that we get for like addiction funds and other programs that we've allocated out, food insecurity and stuff, also, there are people in that group that are also recovering from, you know, maybe mental health, addiction problems, or, you know, just trying to get back on their feet. And so I guess through the mayor, through the town manager, some of those fundings, through the opioid in this, in the, in the cannabis money, could any of those be allocated to help people that are, because I know there were some people that are reintegrating back in the community that are coming from incarceration? You know, and I know they have social workers there. I mean, could we be identifying some of this money that could be also going into our own help system?
Cannabis more so than opioids. Cannabis is part of the budget process. The council could always choose to take part of the money in the budget and put it towards this.
Absolutely. And again, you know, I, I help folks fill out applications for social security disability in my role, and, you know, one illness can, you know, as a person of single household income, you know, you know, I obviously can't say names, but I was helping a client who, you know, she works very part-time, barely 18,000. Her husband was the breadwinner, making about, you know, 60 or 70,000 at the time. They have one child. He's severely ill, no income's coming in, he owned his own company, and now he's waiting to get approved for funding. And if you know what's going on with our federal government, you can't even get through the phone lines to get anybody from social security disability. It can take a year sometimes to even get a rejection or an award. And that's based upon, if you're only like 60-something years old, younger, or 50-something, that, that amount is not your max amount either. So it is very scary, and if anybody is one illness away from experiencing food insecurity or homelessness, if your, if your household relies on two incomes, you know, your rent, your mortgage, your car, and all of a sudden, that other income, let it be 20,000 or 100,000, is not coming in, that changes the tapestry. And that's what I see, and that's what I work with currently, and that's why I'm advocating for this. And that's why I also want to see, I'm happy to see the number go up to 600, and I know that you're new, but I, I think I am going to make a referral and see if we can come up with something where, if you're a family of three or more, maybe that should be 700 or 750. I'm not sure where that number should be, but I want to make sure folks are getting the help that they need in our community. We have an obligation to do that, and thank you.
All right. So I have a few questions. The list we have here, it shows some people are getting more than the 600, and they're getting like 1,200 or 1,600 or 1,000. Is this at your discretion, that you have the ability to make some changes?
Yes, absolutely. So those items, those values are going to vary. So how it works is when somebody requests basic needs assistance, if the request is $600 or less, and the request is rent and utilities, then the social worker does have the discretion to approve that. If the request is something other than rent and utilities, or the request is over $600, that's where the social worker will staff the case with myself. So we go discuss the case, see what all of the factors are, see what the situation is, and then it's at my discretion as far as the amount.
All right. Well, that's good to know, because I do know that there were times during COVID that there was some discretion that was used as well, because there were some people that were struggling more than others, and the 600 was not firmly there, but it depended on situation, so I'm glad to hear that. There is also other ways to get basic needs met. Is that correct? I mean, I know for rental and utility assistance is basically what you're asking for. There are other agencies, right, in our community that help as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Some of them are even in our budget. So even if they do utilize the 600 with you, there are other agencies they can seek help with as well. Is that correct? Always Home, potentially Malta. They could also contact 2-on-1 Assistance. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. And can you let me know how the state, you have on here that even utilities, and does that include heat as well, or is it more like electricity? Can you give your definition of utilities?
Yeah, it includes both. So that would include electricity, that would include heat, that would even include sewer water. Sometimes we have folks who are requesting assistance with a repair, like a furnace repair, and that could include those as well.
Okay, good to hear. And do you have, what is the inkling that you have from the state of Connecticut on home heating assistance and their funding that they're going to give? Do you know if that is being reduced or increased, or is it, will it be flat?
From, my understanding from speaking with the partnering agencies is that they anticipate that it will be about the same, but there may be, my understanding is that there may be a delay in such funding, but that doesn't delay the process of folks getting approved.
Understood. I don't have a problem with moving it up to the $75,000. I also, I can understand maybe giving some flexibility, but it is also one of these things that if there is more needed in the future, they can always come back. And so I could support the 75 for now, but sometimes I'm just leery of overfunding, and then the money would have to come, will be sent back to the general fund at the end of the year anyway. So, and potentially that that could be used for other situations that might arise as well. But I think 75 at this time would give some flexibility to the director to be able to help if the need arises in special cases, so. All right. Seeing, Counselor Parker, did you, you're good? All right. Seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-874 Human Services Assistance Fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. We're going to vote on it as a whole. That was the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is 2025-872, the Opioid Settlement Revenue Distribution Process. You sure can. It's 8:08. We'll take about a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
But I'm happy to hear everybody's opinion, and hopefully we'll get something through, so it'll be smooth going on.
All right. Thank you for that. I'm not really sure exactly how we want to proceed with this. Because I figure this is going to be more of a.
Excuse me, Madam, is this your time?
No, I'm being the mayor right now. So my thoughts were potentially open it up to maybe one round of, you know, comments from everybody, and then we would sort of jump into how we want the process to unfold for an application process, and potentially have more of a workshop of sorts like we have in the past, and then take some kind of consensus from councilors to give direction on how we want this to be done. So with that, I would open up for first round of, for discussion at this time.
Point of clarification?
Your question.
So we're only speaking once to this, and everyone is round robin?
I'm letting everybody have a chance to speak once, and then we will go into more of a workshop on this.
I mean, I guess, can we vote on that? Because I don't agree with, like, limiting our time to speak. Like, I just think that there's a lot to it, so I think there should be a vote.
That's why I was going to go into a workshop.
Can we vote on that process?
What would you like to vote on?
That we just, maybe some people want to speak twice, but if you want to speak, we already have timed time, so cutting it out is really, you know, cutting it down.
You would like two turns and then go into a workshop.
However, if you want to have a workshop, great, but I just think, I don't want to cut my time out.
You can put whatever on the floor. You can put whatever on the floor you'd like.
I'd like to consider keeping our normal timing. If you want to add whatever workshop, that's fine.
I don't hear a second on that.
I apologize. That wasn't a second. I was looking to speak with the next.
Yeah, I didn't hear a second on that. Thank you. Counselor McBride.
Yes, thank you. I reviewed this and I think this is a fantastic idea. I think there should be a thorough process reviewed on the council approved. But in looking through this, we don't have, in my opinion, it looks like all the money for 2025 is already earmarked, so I think we have time. I don't think we have, I think we'll wait some, we have time to allocate this money through a new process. So, I don't know if I need to make a motion or recommendation, but I think what would be proper is for this council to set up a committee, a subcommittee similar to what we're doing with the library committee right now in reviewing how those funds are going to be earmarked, which is also similar to what we did last year or the year before with the fire districts. We had a committee that was involved and vetted through the process. And I think we had a committee with the property reuse committee several years ago that provided review and discussion and then forwarded to the council. So, I would like to see this become, if the council desired it, this become a workshop of a subcommittee similar to some of the other things we've done and have that group do a lot of the due diligence, whether or not some of the participation can be from the outside as well, some residents to get feedback and really come up with a thorough process and then have that committee, as the library and the property reuse and the fire district should come back and give a recommendation to the council and then the council review, make changes, approve it, like we did with those other subcommittees. Because I think this is a lot of, this is a lot of work for this council to do and I think it would be proper to have a subcommittee. So, that was, that would be my thought if the council would be willing to do that. That's it.
Counselor Portilein.
I think Counselor could have his hand up. He had his hand up before, I think.
Well, I'll make that a motion if that's proper.
I'll second it.
What is your motion?
To establish a subcommittee to review the opioid settlement review distribution process.
Subcommittee established to, I'm sorry, what was the last part?
To review the distribution process of the opioid settlement funds.
I'm not here in a second.
I did in a second.
I seconded it. We did it a while ago. We both did.
Counselor Portilein, you don't have to speak like that to me. Thank you. Thank you.
That was an interpretation. We just said we seconded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, by McBride, seconded by Good. Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I can agree to the committee, but I think it should be the council to review because if we get all the people that could potentially be working on this and getting the application, it needs to be kept separate. You can't have the people that are going to apply to be part of the committee. So, working with, Mr. Burt has done a wonderful job working with some others to establish this and I think I like the way this is formatted. It's just a matter of who's going to make the selection process and bring it back. Personally, I had a thought of a different committee, but if we're looking at doing this down the road, I would wait until, I wouldn't want, I don't want to wait too long because technically it should go into public safety because this is public safety concern. That's my personal opinion. But, just a thought, everyone think about it. So, thank you.
Point of information?
Your question?
Is that a motion?
She didn't present it as an amended motion, did you?
That's what I'm asking.
I can. Counselor Portilein.
Yep. You know, I thank Counselor Good for submitting this forward. I too was going to submit something, but I was kind of waiting considering it's, there wasn't much of an urgency since we already just blanketly gave it out for commentators, the last, you know, next couple or whatever. So, for me, and we weren't worried about the process at that time, so for me, I don't think this is a rush or a workshop, which is why I was asking for our two terms to speak tonight because I feel like tonight we should be collaborating with our two times to talk about what we envision and using our regular times that we normally have and then having this be part of a somewhat of a subcommittee, whatever the council agrees upon, since it's not urgent. I just don't feel the time can be given here at the council in this little small workshop where you're limited to talk. I think a group really diving in would be great. Counselors can attend. I can understand the concern about people who may apply, but some of the best things that are ever done are people who make sure that certain things aren't missing from it. I don't think it's a public safety side. I believe it would be more of a human service or, you know, but I don't think it's necessarily for me a public safety concern more than a, an outside agencies or human service concern in need for our community. But I appreciate the thought from Counselor McBride. I fully support that. I think having a group on here and maybe even having that group allow for public comment if they chose, which can happen, and so community members could come and submit recommendations or speak, you know, at that time. And then when it comes back to the council for its final write-up, I think there should be a public, you know, hearing or discussion where we're asking people about the application process. But again, long overdue, been asking for a while, where it was told many times that it would come forward and in my opinion, it didn't. And I think this is a much organic process since the funds have already been allocated and this is a better process. And I can agree, we don't want to look as if there's some form of favoritism or as it was stated before. So, I think having a clear, open process and as we heard, there's many other outside agencies in our community. And again, just because your name and your place and your address is Groton doesn't mean that you're solely serving Groton. Maybe not even 50% of your clients are from Groton. So, I think it's very vital that we're opening up that door. Other towns use their human service department, which we already have, and they were soliciting other outside agencies. So, I know it was stated at one of the other meetings that the town counselors could go look for those people and we did submit, but we do have all full-time jobs and we do have a human service department who knows those agencies because Recovery Groton was already meeting and had Groton involved and Human Services was aware. So, maybe we bring our human service director involved in this. That would be a great way if she's willing to come and have some input since she understands a little bit more of these, this outside agency. Thank you.
Counselor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to refer this to the safety committee. I agree with...
Second.
Pacino.
I agree with Counselor Parker that this is a very strong public safety concern and we have the committee members in place and we can take their recommendations. They did a great job with the ambulance situation, so I have full faith in them. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Who did you get for the second?
I have, so I have a motion on the floor by McBride, seconded by Good. I have an amended motion on the floor to send it to the safety committee made by Good, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I just, I'm fine with going to the safety committee. We've had great success with everything else that we have put in there. My question is, we're almost near the end of our term. This is going to take longer than the eight weeks that we have left of our term. How does that transmit, transfer from this term to the next term with completely different people and completely different committees? So, I just, I'm not sure how that, if it gets assigned now and then...
Point of information?
Excuse me. Counselor Portilein is down there making hand motions and all kinds of things. Please stop.
I have a right to move my hands. Thank you.
You're just reacting, you're reacting to everything that I say by making hand motions.
I just want that of the nodding.
Counselor Portilein gestures in Robert's Rules of Orders.
You cannot suppress my body movements. Thank you.
Point of information?
So, basically my question is just how we manage that process as it goes from one council to the next council because it's going to take longer than eight weeks to do this.
Counselor...
Or do we just wait till the next council?
Counselor Pacino, your question.
My question is, when do we think we need to have these applications in by, for them to apply for the next opioid money? And that would be to John Burt.
Mr. Burt.
You know, it's one thing to allocate funds in advance for one agency. I think it's hard to do it for multiple. So, you're probably going to want to wait until you actually have money in hand. So, it's going to be a while. You're probably going to want to know what you're dealing with so you know what you can allocate to people. So, it's going to be a long while.
Potentially another year.
Yeah, probably another year.
I still have two minutes left.
Go ahead.
So, just another question I have is I think what Town Manager Burt has put together here is fantastic. He's done a great job with this form. One of the ways to see how well a form works is to use it and test it. And if we could just use the form for the next set and then take all that feedback and then, you know, instead of trying to figure out the perfect process, is use the form, basically see what works, what doesn't work, and then adapt it to after that process. So, it's just an idea that...
Mayor.
This form is very close to the cannabis form we're using. So, when we do that in the beginning of the year in January, that'll start informing, you know, this and, you know, that'll be kind of a first good step for seeing how this form generally works. Obviously, there's different parameters, but I think we'll have a, you know, good feeling for it after that.
So, that may be the best test is to go through that process, see how this works, adapt it, and then have the meeting, then have the committee after that.
Yeah.
I'm just putting out ideas. And then I just, a couple ideas that I had on this, I'll just put them out because I'm speaking, is just being able to identify all the different organizations that we have and what category they fit in. Are they opioid? Are they, you know, cannabis? Are they NIPS? Just, and some organizations may have two or three places that they fit, but just, you know, we don't need to have, you know, one, if the organization doesn't fit, we don't need to be discussing it in, just pre-assigning and kind of categorizing all these different organizations. And then I had just this idea earlier too of sort of when we get to that stage of a pop-up committee. So, you know, some kind of a committee that helps figure out and read these things, make some recommendations on them. Not a permanent committee, just when that sort of fall, that sort of comes at the time when the money's going. But I think doing as Town Manager Burt said, you know, go through the cannabis one, see how that works, make adjustments, and then you'll have a form that's actually working and then that may be the good time to send it to the committee, the safety committee.
You know, in the cannabis form, we ask them, you know, can you use these funds for these particular purposes? How much of the funds you requesting, et cetera? You know, obviously, we do the similar with opioids or we could pre-approve. You know, we'll have the list of all these different agencies we're dealing with we could at some point send out and, you know, you know, what would, of your services you give, what kinds of things fall under these uses and, you know, we can kind of pre-approve categories if interested.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Point of information? Your question?
So, if we're not really going to have this round robin discussion that we originally anticipated, could we just reinstate our second time so we can speak to this?
Obviously, we're not doing a workshop, so that's not, that didn't happen.
So, we can have our second time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to move the question for the vote on the committee, if possible.
We can't move the question because we have not allowed all counselors to have two turns to speak yet.
Thank you.
Hold on just a second. Not all, yeah, not all counselors have had two chances to speak before you can call a question. Counselor Parker's next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, any agenda item could be an open agenda item for the next council as we've known that other councils have left items for us. They can take it up or not take it up or discuss it. So, even if we move it forward to the next, to the committee, this could take place after the election or down the road because it sounds like we're not going to look at anything until January. So, it would still be on our open agenda list and we can go forward from there. It'll be a pending item. That's it. So, that was my thought process is to leave it for the next group to look at, to confirm and get some additional ideas if we need to. And again, I like the form. I read it the first time it came out about more than a month ago. And it's similar to, like Mr. Burt said, similar to the narcotics one with the minor things. And we already know there's guidelines for both the narcotics and the opioid settlement. It's just a matter of who fits in that category and once they apply, we'll know who has it because the form's going to tell you yes or no. That's all they're going to do. So, if we can, I think it's a good idea to leave it for the next group so that we're not in the predicament that we've been in before. And many have asked the process and some people have asked for some of the money so we can give, be fair and equitable in doing our process. This will work. That's my opinion, but we won't know until we try it. Thank you.
Counselor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm fine with this going to committee to be looked at. I would say the one thing that I think that is really missing here is the question that if you don't receive full funding, can you use partial funding? Just something that we as a council couldn't decide. If we can't give a full amount, can I even utilize it? So, that would be my one big point that I would ask that the council look at in the future. But other than that, I think this is a great starting point and I'm fine with it going to committee to be tweaked before it comes back. And I agree that it probably makes sense to come back after it's already been looked at once. So, maybe in February, whenever. That is the best timing.
Counselor Merritt, did you have your hand up? I wasn't sure.
Yes.
Counselor Merritt.
I'm in favor of this application form right here, which is what we're going to request. We requested to see one and they came back to us with one. And now we're trying to pick it apart? Or what are we trying to do here? I'd like to address the motion on the floor that perhaps if there is a motion to approve of this or like Counselor Parker said, send it down the road to the next council. But I don't think we have to pick it apart and then send it to the next council because they're going to reinstate what was there. I think we need to stick close to what's on the paper here and be mindful of when we approve of a donation, there are guidelines as to how that money was given to us, as to what it can be spent on. And we have to stay within those guidelines. We hear a chance of losing that money.
There was a cricket in here. It's quite loud. All right, I'm going to take a turn on this. My thought process was, because this is a referral that came to us, it was put on the agenda and there is an application that was created by the town manager prior to that happening. We could send it to committee if that's what the will of the council is. But we have done much work here at the council as in a workshop to do the work right here. And it makes sense to me that if you have things on here that you wanted to maybe tweak or change, that that might also, if it was discussed here, would give Mr. Burt possibly some ideas to basically update the cannabis spreadsheet, I mean, the questionnaire as well if we had discussion and deliberations here, which will be going out in January. So, we could send it to committee. I just don't want to overcomplicate the whole process. But it is the will of the council on how they choose to take this matter up and when they choose to take this matter up. It is at this moment... It is, at this moment, the motion on the floor is to send it to a subcommittee to review, to establish and review the distribution process of the opioid fund with an amended motion to send it to the safety committee. And nobody has put in a timeline or nor they have, they said when they want it sent and if they wanted it for the next council. So at this time, it would go to the safety committee, and they should, they would be working on it right now, which meant if you worked on it now, we should finish it by the end of our term. And the response would be able to come back quickly. And do you think the safety committee would be able to handle that in that time and manner?
Safety committee would have one month to complete this. I don't feel like it is the best choice. I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you to stop the time because you're doing Rachel's time, sorry. Or the mayor's time, my apologies. I don't know. I don't know that we're gonna get all the information together in a month. I, I, yeah, I don't know. I can't promise that. So, and my understanding was that the the thought process was to see what happens with the first round in January, and therefore it would go after that timeline.
But that's not the motion on the floor, though. But that is not the motion on the floor.
Okay. I guess my question is, was that the intent of the motion on the floor? If it's not the motion on the floor? And I, may I ask, the motion was made by Councilor Parker?
Councilor Good and seconded by Pacino. So you don't think that you'd be able to finish this in possibly a month, potentially?
I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I know that it took multiple months to get through the the last thing that we spoke about, which was a bigger project. But I don't want to rush things, so I'm gonna say I can't commit that that will happen in a month.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Mr. Mayor.
If it gets referred to to the Public Safety Committee, if the chair doesn't pick it up, it'll just automatically go to the next council anyways. I'm not sure any further action on that is needed.
But the new council does not have to take up what we set in a rough place. We don't, they don't have to, is that correct?
Once it's referred, usually we keep it going unless they set otherwise.
Because I have seen at times that changes. You can't direct the next council. So I would entertain a motion to add an amendment on this because we have a main motion, we have an amendment, and there is still room for another amendment to, if need be, change the timeline.
Madam Mayor, were you done with your time or no?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to add to the current amendment of the committee, but after January's round goes out, to be referred to the committee afterwards to conceive, to see if this process would work, the current process of similar to narcotics.
Second.
In other words, we'll have it go through the first round.
Can I just, just one second, please? So my, it's amended to send to committee in January of 2026. Is that the amendment?
After it's gone, the first round of applications go out.
First round.
For Mr. Burt.
Correct. Am I saying that correctly? Of applicants for cannabis. For cannabis. Is received.
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna read it just to make sure I got it right. Amended motion is to send to committee in January of 2026 after the first round of applicants for cannabis funding is received. Maybe I should take out the January.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I mean, who knows what that might be?
All right, amended to send to committee after the first round of applicants for cannabis funding is received.
Yes.
So that was, and this was the motion by Parker? And I'm sorry, was it seconded by Jones?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. My reasoning is that once this is gone through, we will have a def, or the next council will have a definite idea of how that application process works. Part two of that, I believe, and please quote me, tell me if I'm wrong. Mr. Burt, will you still try to look at and see who can fit under the settlement, opiate settlement money?
I can if the council wishes.
Because I think it's us trying to look at the application process, see if it works. Because you're gonna, you've tweaked this, this similar to the narcotics right now.
Right.
Okay. And then we would be able to, or the next council will be able to move forward and look at everything and say, hey, this is how we want to do it, it's comfortable, we'll send it to committee afterwards, and go from there. Thank you.
Councilor Good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I see Councilor Parker's point on this, but I'd also like to remind everybody that this money is handed to the town council under extremely different circumstances. And I would hope that any committee meeting would understand that. They are not the same as cannabis funds. They are not the same as NIP funds. This is something I hope any committee would appreciate, the difference, and move according to that, not based on other budgetary items. Thank you.
Councilor Burley.
Thanks. Again, any process is better than the process that we have, which we did have. So I'm kind of supportive, whatever we can go through, because I think something has to be done. Again, I don't think it's time sensitive, so I think waiting is fine. I also think that, you know, I, I don't really, I mean, I think that whoever's up here later in council could pick what committee. I don't really think it's, falls under necessarily safety per se. I mean, it could really be any committee that's committed. Like, we had a property use committee that was formed that was like a small group of people. It doesn't have to be a standing committee. We've had other workout thing for short term rentals and many other things. So it doesn't have to, it's not a one size fits all kind of thing. So I do think it could have a value of being an additional committee that's added for this purpose. So, I mean, I'm not sure what the reason is to pull it into one or the other that we have. I think just, you know, creating one in general would be fine. Again, I mean, this application, yep, came out a couple of months ago when he, we discussed meeting something. You know, it's been reviewed and looks pretty good. But again, I can appreciate that the cannabis rule out will identify any loose ends that might be missing if there should be any. But also, I think councilors, you know, can look, you know, online and look other places to see what other applications look like in comparison to this. There's no rush, right? We have time, and we can see and have the town manager report back after that first round. But for me, I don't think it's really pertinent that it's being allocated to a particular committee or not. I can agree with Councilor Parker that, yes, in the past, if something goes to a committee that can get worked on, that you group that arrives just, you know, chooses to take it up or not. And, you know, usually people will look at the open agenda item and discuss it in some way, either move it or agree to it or what have you. I can't imagine that this would be a problem. I think it's pretty clear, right? You need a process, you know, with handing out funds. So I can't imagine that, no matter that this will, you know, be something that we should have to be concerned with. And again, it's important to look at and make sure that we're doing our due diligence and opening it up so that everybody in the community that may qualify under that rule are being notified publicly, social media, our human service page, any place that, you know, you're getting the word out for services. And I personally think human services is one of those areas when I think of this. And making sure it's up on our town website. You know, hey, we're, we're taking applications. Do you have an agency that services residents in this capacity? Or whatever the, whatever the stipulation? That can start to be rolled out now. So I'm excited to see something is moving and it's gonna be done. Thank you.
Point of information, Madam Mayor. Throw you to Mr. Burt.
Your question?
Mr. Burt, how is, who reviews the cannabis applications that come back in, the letters that go out?
That's part, that is part of the budget process. So I review initially because it's part of the town manager process. You will have all the information, and you will review as part of your process.
Thank you. And to follow up on your question, all the applications will be in the back of our budget book.
Yes.
Just like we get from all outside sources, correct?
Correct.
Point of information?
Your question?
Through the, the mayor, through the town manager, for that, where will you be soliciting those applications from? Like, how are you letting the public know that they're coming?
Probably the ways you said. I think I have a pretty thorough listing, you know. A lot of people have reached out in the last few weeks, so I doubt there'll be too many more on top of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. One more point of information that I forgot to add to that.
Your question?
Is there a timeframe? I know, like, so with the already outside agencies and the town staff know, like, when to submit, what would be the timeframe when looking at this, just so I can kind of mark it, to watch the cannabis in relation to the opioid funding? When would that timeframe have to submit their application by?
We send a, we send a letter out to all the agencies in early January.
And then for the, my other question, for the opioid funds, once this is set, based on when it needs to be distributed, when would that, when do you envision that application opening and closing, roughly?
Probably roughly a year from now.
Would it be part of the, would it be part of the budget cycle again? Would you put it in?
I mean, you could, right, that's something for a committee to recommend.
All right, perfect, thank you.
So if this is going to the next committee, I don't have a problem with that. That is the will of this council. I would, if there is anybody that will be here and elected again for the next council, there are some things that I do have, so maybe some advice on this questionnaire. You may want, as for nonprofits, to ask for such as a 990 form, which will show revenue and also what some of their expenses are and how much their staffing cost as well. You may also want to ask some questions such as, do you exclude certain groups of people? Because some organizations only take certain types of people, and I think their services are very, maybe, are very narrow and excludes other populations that still need the services.
And I had added a number two, listing your requirements, restrictions for potential clients to utilize your services. That was what I was getting at on that last one.
Right, because there are, like, I'll just say it. I have heard that there is one organization that's religious, and I have no problems with this, but they only take a certain type of religion, and they exclude other ones. So if we, as a town, are planning to give money to such a group, you have to understand that they will be excluding other religions. And when you're talking about opioid and, you know, substance abuse issues here, I don't think it discriminates on religion. So just be mindful of some of those issues. But that's my two cents.
Your question?
Point of information. I guess I'm just trying to understand that, just for my notes for later. Because we've given money in other capacities to, like, Sacred Heart Church and other things that are, like... So I guess I'm just trying to understand. So there might be an agency that only has a certain religious...
Point of information, point of order.
I'm just trying to understand.
Your point of order?
What is the question? Because if the, I don't understand where the question's coming in at.
You're not understanding because you haven't let me finish. So if you let me finish, I can get to my question.
Point of order is supposed to be a clarifying question. The question is not there, not a statement before you make the question. Point of order.
Okay, I agree, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. What I was stating very clearly is I'm trying to understand a clarifying question based on what the mayor stated about the religious component. So I can understand.
Your point of order?
The mayor has ruled on a point of order. It's not up for debate. It is up for appeal if they would like to appeal to point of order.
Correct, thank you.
I'm asking my clarifying question.
Can you just ask the clarifying question?
I'm trying to get there, I'm trying to, I don't understand what you said, so I'm trying to, like, frame it correctly. But obviously, that's not allowed right now. I'm asking, what are you referring to when you say the religious component? I'm trying to understand that, making sure it's open. What do you, what do you mean by that? Like, I'm trying to understand.
Like, there is an organization that accepts one religion but does not accept other religions.
Okay.
All right, so I see no other hands. So we're gonna take a vote on the second amended motion to send to committee after the first round of applicants for cannabis funding is received. That motion was by Parker, seconded by Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Abstentions, too, I guess.
All right, so that motion passes, seven to zero to two. We go backwards, so we're gonna do the first amended motion to send it to this, this is along with the amendment that just passed, send this to the safety committee. This was moved by Good and seconded by Pacino's. Pacino.
Both of us.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that's gonna pass nine to zero to two. I mean, nine to zero to zero. All right, so now, with the main motion on the floor, which was to send it to subcommittee to establish a review for distribution process of the opioid funds, which will move to the safety committee, and the timeline will be after, this timeline will be after the first round of applicants for cannabis funding is received. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes nine to zero to zero. Did I have to do the whole thing as a whole?
I think that was the whole thing.
That was the whole thing as a whole? Okay, all righty then. Okay, so open access 2025-521-8. Pleasant Valley Final Project Concept Development Team Draft Terms Executive Session. And this is gonna go to...
And we do have a presentation prior to going to the executive session.
Okay. Should we take the presentation first then, I guess? And then we will move on. I'm sorry, I'm passing a note, and everybody's gonna wonder why. So it says, no peanut butter, because Bruce is bringing out a snack, and we have an allergy.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, sorry, my apologies.
We don't want everybody at home having, we don't want anybody saying...
And I thank you, and I'll thank you for that, so I do not have allergic reaction. We have to have the use of it.
Sorry, I was in panic mode.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna do a presentation first, and...
There's no food in this.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself and have a little presentation? Then we'll raise the motion to go into executive session.
Sounds great, thank you.
John Roderick, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Karin Piazza, Economic and Community Development Manager.
Eric Callahan from the town attorney's office.
So tonight, we just wanted, in open session, kind of catch everybody up, really for the public and residents, so they know where we are as we move into the next steps of the disposition process. Again, kind of talking about where we are now, looking at the final step of where we are, finalizing those terms, how things work, quickly touch again upon why executive session, the next steps, and then talk about town council's actions. Abbreviated version of the slide that I know everybody loves so much, looking at our disposition process. But yay, we're on the last stage of this. Just for everybody's knowledge, we've actually been working on this for over a year. We released that RFP for Pleasant Valley back in September. We released that RFP for Pleasant Valley back in September 2024. Took us a few months prior to that, working with the council on goals and the benefits for the public. So here we are, a year later, and finally at the last step in this process.
And we wanted to do a brief overview for residents, thank you, on how essentially a public-private partnership works. Because that's really where we're at in this last stage for negotiating terms. Essentially, your column on the left is a town-owned property. We don't really have the funds to build a development project or maintain it ongoing. And really, the reason we do all this is because we're interested in really extensive public benefits for that town-owned property. This could be affordable housing or park space. And really, it doesn't matter how great the intent is of the use. It's still very... It still has to be financially feasible and be financially possible and sustainable. And regardless of that need, construction costs are really the same. So we use some of our tools that we have as a town to help make sure those public benefits come to fruition. So moving over to the next column of the public-private partnership. The reason we issue the request for proposals in the first place is to invite those private partners to the table to help us accomplish those public benefits. They use their extensive expertise and experience in developing projects. And most importantly, they bring a lot of capital. They invest in the town. So for example, for, let's say this project could be roughly 90 million. If our budget is about only 160 for the whole town, we really could, you know, if we were to do nothing else, not cover roads, schools, fire, police, we'd really only be able to afford about one and a half with all of our services stopping. So just to give you an idea of the investment that our private partners are bringing to the table. And then finally, in that town toolbox, this is what we dive into this evening, is we have two main tools or incentives that we can utilize to help offset the cost of those expensive public benefits that we're asking for. And those are reduced land purchase price or a tax abatement. In addition, the development team can also bring additional resources, like their own loans they've applied for, that help specific public benefits. Next slide, please.
Sure. And what we'll talk about tonight, a little bit in open session, but then really specifically in executive session is the term sheet. And really, this is the action that you, the council, gave staff, the town manager, really moving ahead with drafting that purchase and sales agreement, or the PSA. And the term sheet really is a document that's set up so we can clearly identify all of the items that are going to go into the purchase and sales agreement. So then when we take that next step and draft the purchase and sales agreement, we're all on the same page. Again, it's informed by the land development process as well as the other steps that we've gone through this whole process. And really, the draft terms will populate that PSA. It's the PSA, the purchase and sales agreement, is the final legal document that really sets in stone the things that we want, the guarantees that are in place, as well as the public benefits. And the purchase and sales agreement is not an immediate sale. There's still a number of steps that the development team has to go through even after the council has authorized the town manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement. There's a whole nother process that happens, which we'll talk about very briefly in a couple minutes.
So briefly, and we just have a couple more slides. This slide shows siphoning down to where we are today, all of the steps and processes that have informed the draft terms that you'll see this evening. So real quickly, the request for proposals document, town council identified the public goals they wanted to see in the project. The PSRC identified, went through all the applicants and identified the development team that best met those goals. Then the town council reviewed that approval and went through their recommendation process and they discussed their preferred terms on that proposed project. Then we went through additional public feedback, including two public hearings and the informational Q and A. That input was also received and brought into the terms. And then the town council's final approval and selection of Spinnaker. So now we're at draft term sheet and you'll... Again, you'll see those this evening. And then that informs that final PSA. And another thing, this is just to outline how the draft terms are going to inform that final document. So the left is everything we just went over. The middle is the draft terms and how they were informed. And then finally, you'll see that purchase and sale agreement. There'll also be additional attachments to that agreement, including the fixed assessment agreement of how we arrive at terms for the affordable housing and an open space agreement, which is tied to the park space terms that we've all been talking about and making sure that's available in perpetuity. And all those documents work together. The idea is essentially if someone picks this up three, five, 10 years from now, it's all very clearly outlined in what all those terms were and what should happen with the project.
And again, you know, we've been trying to, with the council, with the PSRC, trying to be, have a process that's very deliberate and very transparent up until this point. So that final project concept design will be presented to the council after the signed purchase and sales agreement, but prior to that document going to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the design of that project. So, you know, terms after, further checkpoints after this purchase and sales agreement. And that design must be in alignment with the terms of the purchase and sales agreement, the things that we've talked about. The Planning and Zoning Commission process, if they have substantial changes to that design, it has to come back to the council for them to see what changed and why. The property sale, the development team does not have the opportunity to purchase or own the property until after the Planning and Zoning Commission's review and approval. And there's additional checkpoints and even clawback provisions within that purchase and sales agreement. And, you know, again, why do we do these types of things in executive session? It's really related to the negotiation of the draft terms so that we can do that consistent with Connecticut state law to keep proprietary information confidential, fairness, give us a good negotiating advantage. And it's that, just the checks and balances in the executive session. And anything that we do with this eventually will be approved in the public session.
And then finally, we want to continue to direct residents to greatergrotten.com, where we created the page to be a one-stop shop of information for the project. That's been updated with this next phase and what's coming up. And then finally, we can move into executive session, where town council will review those draft terms and staff will return with a draft purchase and sale agreement. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, will we be coming back to the council after this? I mean, I know to adjourn, but will we have any business, you think? Or I'm just wondering.
I don't think so. I think just consensus, general feeling of consensus. But so now, I don't think we'll need to do anything but adjourn.
Okay. All right. Just to let people at home know, if they want to wait, they're probably more than happy to. So Councilor Merritt, would you like to read this one? This is on page 143 of our packet. It is the motion at the bottom. It is 2025-521-8. Pleasant Valley Final Project Concept Development Team Draft Terms Executive Session.
Okay, I am 2025-521. Motion, I move that the members of the town council, Director of Planning and Development Services, John Reiner, Town Manager, John Burt, and Economic and Community Development Manager, Corinne Piazza, go into executive session pursuant to general statutes, section 1-200, parentheses 6, parentheses B, for the discussion of the selection of a site for the lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by the state or a political subdivision of the state concerning the draft terms of the purchase and sales agreement for the former Pleasant Valley school property.
Second? I would like to add that Attorney Callahan is not listed on here and I would like to make an amended motion to add him.
Second.
So I had the main motion was moved by Merritt. And that was seconded by Bordelain. An amended motion to add Attorney Callahan, a motion by Franco, seconded by Parker. All right, so vote on the amended first. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Point of information? Point of information?
We're in the middle of a vote.
I thought we just voted for one. We're going to do the next one. I thought I could do...
I haven't finished the vote.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right, we're going to... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Do you have a point of... Do you have a question?
Yes. After the vote, can we go over the electronics rules for the executive session?
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead. You pass the...
I have not passed the main motion here. That was a point of information. Now we're on to the main motion as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Councilor Bordelain, I didn't hear your vote.
I'm...
All right, we're going into executive session. That passes nine to zero to zero.
Time, Madam Mayor.
It is 9:14 PM. ...
You already adjourned, Roscoe?
What?
You already adjourned.
He's self adjourned.
We haven't adjourned yet.
John, are you ready? We're recording. Okay. It is 10:29. We are back from our executive session. Only thing left on the agenda is...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Parker. I didn't hear who's. I'm saying Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. And I'm just gonna let you know, from new business on, we were unanimous on everything. Adjourned at what time? It is 10:29. Unanimous?
Okay, let me get it. My phone turn on yet?